Good evening. I'd like to thank everyone for tuning in and coming to tonight's hearing to learn more about the city's proposed legislation. Legislation that will certainly make our streets safer for our biking community. So, I want to thank you all for taking the time to coming down on such a hot day. It's good to be in air conditioning. But again, it is certainly appreciative when you take time out to come and hear about legislation and to provide testimony that continues to share with us what we need to know in moving forward with legislation that's responsive and achieving what we hope the legislation will achieve, and that is safer streets. I want to start off by thanking the folks who've been working hard on this for about a year, I would say, and engaged in this legislation. I want to start with Randy Bowman, Assistant Director for the Department of Public Service, Leslie Strater, Environmental Policy Advisor, Scott Ulrich, Healthy Places Program Coordinator, and Daniel Moorhead. I also want to acknowledge representation from the other council members' offices, both Councilmember Tyson as well as Councilmember Klein. Want to share with everyone that the city has been working with some of the stakeholders on legislation that will make our streets safer for bicyclists for over a year. I'm certainly excited that we have legislation ready to propose that will do exactly what we hope it to do. As many of you may know, safety is extremely important to me as we look at all of our legislation. But among other things, the legislation will also clean up the code by making it consistent with the state code and including gender-neutral language. It will also give further protections to our biking community and also our safety officers. Their safety is our safety. I am proud to be a part of this transformation for roadways, not only as a bike rider myself, but also as a leader in our city in making sure that Columbus is friendlier to bicyclists and also allows us to have really shared roadways. So, without further ado, I'd like us to get started, and I would like to turn the floor over to Randy Bowman, again, our Assistant Director for the Department of Public Service, as well as Leslie Strater, our Environmental Policy Advisor. Thank you, Randy and Leslie. I believe you are ready, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. As you said, my name is Leslie Strater. I'm Policy Advisor of Mayor Coleman's Office of Environmental Stewardship. I'm joined tonight by Randy Bowman and Daniel Moorhead of the Department of Public Service. As you mentioned, about a year ago, we began working on this issue. We were approached by both Yea Bikes and Consider Biking, that are the city's two primary bike advocacy organizations. Safety is especially important to us, especially for those road users that are most vulnerable. So, when we were approached by this, we began by looking at both Cincinnati and Cleveland as examples. They have already passed similar ordinance at the time we began this project. So, we learned from their experience and with the mayor's support and that of city council, we began drafting some language that we addressed the issue of bike safety, as you mentioned, as well as we brought city code into line with state laws and cleaned up outdated code. Stakeholders weighed in along the way as various drafts were updated, and the final version was approved by the Transportation and Pedestrian Commission of the Department of Public Service as well as their bike subcommittee. So, Randy's going to explain all the specifics in more detail, but we look forward to hearing from you and also from the public tonight.
Thank you, Leslie. Thank you, Councilmember Mills, for the public hearing this evening. We're very happy to bring forward to you this draft legislation. I think just as a perspective, it might be good to recall back to 2008 when city council adopted the bicentennial bikeways plan. That really was a seminal moment for the city of Columbus. Since passage of the bikeway plan in 2008, there have been several other pieces of legislation that council has passed to continue the furtherance of bicycle safety and bikability in the city of Columbus. And there was a bicycle safety helmet law that was passed by city council. There was an ordinance somewhat similar to the ordinance that is, we're going to be discussing tonight, that updated elements of Columbus City Code that was outdated, brought Columbus City Code into alignment with state traffic laws, and then also strengthened requirements for not only bikeways but also sidewalks on development activity and city capital improvement projects. So, there's just been a continued momentum in improving the accommodation for bicycles in the city of Columbus. As Councilmember, as you summarized and as Leslie summarized further, there are really four major elements to the proposed legislation. Adopting best practice bicycling laws, enabling the city to create more bicycle parking, the state law changes that have been referred to that need to be mirrored in Columbus City Code, and then various other code cleanup. I'm going to highlight the most, the largest, most impactful portions of the legislation tonight as it pertains to the best practice bicycling laws. The number, if you can read that on the screen, is 213103. That's Columbus City Code section. And this section is proposed to be modified to improve bicycle safety from the aspect of motorists passing bicycles on the roadways. What is in the proposed legislation includes a requirement for motor vehicles and Cota Transit buses to pass a bicyclist by no less than three feet and for commercial vehicles to pass a bicyclist by no less than six feet. Cleveland's legislation has a three-foot and a six-foot separation requirement. And then subsequent to an ordinance that, the ordinance that Cleveland passed to create the three-foot and six-foot passing distance, they also granted a further exception to transit buses so that transit buses can, because of the training that is offered by the transit agencies, that they can pass at a lesser distance than six feet. And then Cincinnati has a three-foot requirement but no six-foot passing requirement for commercial vehicles and no transit exception. The next major component to the legislation is revising the code to clarify and strengthen the requirements on motorists who are passing bicyclists to make a turn either to the left or to the right. Cyclists call that right hooking or left hooking, and that's not a good thing. That's a very, sometimes fatal and many times injurious actions where a cyclist runs into the side of a vehicle that has not given enough distance between them and the cyclist as they overtake the cyclist to make their turn. So, what was done, what was proposed in Cincinnati's and Cleveland's legislation, we are adding to this proposed legislation for Columbus. The next highlight is also in Chapter 2131, and I think this is a case of what is good for motorists is also good for bicyclists, and this is all about when you're approaching or being approached by emergency vehicles with lights on, that you need to pull over and you need to act safely and be very mindful of those emergency vehicles and also road service vehicles that are out there in the ride of way. Again, this is about safety. That's the title of this ordinance. The next section continuing in Chapter 2131 is adding to the ban on texting to not just motor vehicles but also bicyclists. The gentleman that's riding his bicycle in this video is doing something that's not very safe, and we were proposing this be added to Columbus City Code. Moving on to Chapter 2173, there are several service providers, city and paracity service providers, that operate on bicycles as a manner of performing their duty, and those are police officers. Firefighters are more specifically paramedics that provide services, say during red-white-and-boom emergency services. The Department of Public Service Parking Enforcement Officers and the Special Improvement District ambassadors that are trained and operate on city sidewalks downtown. We're proposing that the code be made clear that these and only these bicyclists are, adult bicyclists, are allowed to ride on sidewalks simply because they're performing their duties, simply because it would be more dangerous for them to be riding in the street performing their duties, which is they're looking around, looking for parking violations or bad guys or someone that is in need of assistance. And so, we want them to be on the sidewalks. They are trained in proper bicycling safety as part of their job duties. The next section is back to 2131. This is looking ahead to the future to enable the city to consider contra-flow bike lanes on one-way streets. So, in other words, a bike lane that directs bicyclists in a direction opposite the flow of motor vehicle traffic on a one-way street. This is a tool that the city would consider as it looks to implement the bikeway plan in the city. We do have one example that was a test case. That's on Milton Avenue up in Clintonville where the Olentangie Trail comes up to street level and crosses West-North Broadway at Milton Avenue. And then, as I said, there's, just like in 2008, there is a need to update and refresh various sections of the code. When one examines city code for one purpose, you might find an opportunity to clarify language or to clean up references. In that case, with this ordinance, we're proposing to clean up some minor things like the definition of vehicles to make city code references consistent. When one section of city code refers to another section of city code, sometimes the reference section of city code isn't, is updated, and we might need to change the other part that references that city, that part of city code. So, we found a couple of those, and we need to clean that up so that the right sections are referenced by the right other sections in city code. This ordinance would also make uniform city code references to motor vehicle restrictions on bike lanes consistent with Chapter 2173, which is about you can only park or stop in a bike lane if you're loading or unloading goods or passengers, and that also applies to Cota. Cota should be able to pull over to the right, drop its passengers off safely. And then lastly, making clear the prohibition of motor vehicles on shared-use paths, sidewalks, and bike lanes. In our review of the city code pertaining to this issue, it was not entirely clear that there indeed should be a prohibition, again, for safety for motor vehicles riding on shared-use paths, sidewalks, and bike lanes. And then, just as in 2008, there is a need to update the Columbus City Code to match state law changes, state law changes from traffic code, and I've listed here several highlights. We have various updates to traffic-related definitions. You know, the city code and state law define many things, whether it's a vehicle, whether it's a crosswalk or an intersection, and those updates to those definitions at the state level need to be mirrored in Columbus City Code. In addition, last year, Ohio Revised Code was amended to consider the use of new types of traffic control devices. In the photo here, you see what is called a pedestrian hybrid beacon, and it's more or less a flashing red light that could be installed at locations where design specifications are met. That would improve the safety of pedestrians and cyclists that would be crossing a street where otherwise a standard traffic signal would not be warranted, or it may require something more than just a yellow crosswalk warning signs. If someone is interested in this device and being installed in their neighborhood, they could certainly contact the city's 311 call center. There are engineering criteria that have to be met for the installation of the pedestrian hybrid beacon. We're aware of some locations already that we're considering in the city. One of them is on Bethel Road east of Riverside Drive or Dublin Road, and that would, if that's the first location, it'll be the first of its kind in the city. So, undoubtedly, there will be a need for some education and awareness as well. Then, in addition to the other state law changes, there was a change in state law earlier this year that allows a motor-driven cycle or scooter to park on sidewalks. There was a qualifier in the state law change that the engine must be 150 cc's or smaller, and it cannot impede normal flow of pedestrian traffic. Columbus City Code also requires that Americans with Disabilities Act compliance must be met so someone cannot block a sidewalk with a cycle or with a motor scooter. In addition, that code change at the state level allowed greater flexibility for motorcycles to park on the pavement, namely, code typically requires a vehicle to park parallel to the curb. The code change at the state level allowed motorcycles to park at an angle. Perhaps that would allow for more motorcycles to be parked in one parking space, which is legal in the city of Columbus. Another element of the proposed legislation includes an initiative from the city to allow more in-street bicycle parking near intersections. We call these in-street bike parking corrals. We presently have three locations installed in the city, one in Old Town East and two, one downtown and one in the short north. I think they've all been well-received. We would like the ability to install more of them, and we need the city code to be modified to allow the Director of Public Service to contemplate and have these installed, namely, there is a need, of course, for safety at intersections to be able to see around the corner. Bicycles, you can pretty much see through, see around, see over. We don't think that they pose the kind of visibility interference that, say, a panel truck would have at an intersection, so hence the suggestion to modify city code to allow for this innovative bike parking. And then lastly, various code cleanup. Councilmember, you mentioned gender neutrality. Anytime our department proposes amendments to city code, we like to modernize it and reflect that. Directors can either be male or female, and that should be reflected in the city code. And then lastly, this is leveraging this piece of legislation to clarify two elements in the city's parking code. This would be for on-street parking that clarifies the restrictions regarding back-in-angle parking. The city has a location on Goodell Avenue where back-in-angle parking is allowed, and we need to amend the code to make clear what are the restrictions for back-in-angle parking. Also clears up inconsistencies between two chapters, two chapters within the parking code that deal with how far from a curb are you to park, and is your vehicle supposed to park parallel to the curb, or can it be at an angle to the curb? And we do have angle parking in the city, and we need to amend the code so that we can stay legal. Lastly, and this has been acknowledged, but I don't think it's never too much to acknowledge the input from stakeholders and interested parties and learned parties. Councilmember, you said that this has taken a while. Well, it's, good things do take a while. And without the input from Yea Bikes, Consider Biking, the LAB, the Commission, the Bicycle Subcommittee of the Transportation Pedestrian Commission, and very important, various city departments, whether that was the city attorney's office who kept us legal, the Department of Public Safety who will be charged with enforcing, very important, as well as Public Health. And without the help of your aides, tonight would not be possible. And so, we thank you. We look forward to answering any questions that you or the audience may have.
Thank you, Director Bowman. And you're correct, it is stakeholders, and thinking recently of some of the other legislation moved, whether it was food trucks or taxi cabs, it's always good to have good stakeholder buy-in. It doesn't move as fast as people would like, but it is thorough and inclusive, and that's two things that you can hope for in legislation. I do have some questions. Sort of in your last statement, you mentioned a very important piece of this that I think I would ask that you would share, both to our viewing and our present audience, the methods of how this will be enforced.
So, like with a lot of traffic incidents, if an officer is present to witness the incident take place, then they are obviously able to sight on the scene. But many scenarios, an officer arrives at the scene after an incident has already occurred, and in that case, it takes interviews of the people who are present to witness the case to determine what exactly unfolded and what sections of code were violated at that time.
Thank you. I want to highlight that we've had some unfortunate fatalities, and this is one of the outcomes I hope that we prevent future fatalities when it comes to bicyclists with the Safe Streets legislation. Let's talk a little bit about how responsibility for both the vehicles and bicyclists to making sure we have safe streets. Those who are in vehicles may ask the question, if I am abiding by the passage of the three feet and six feet, and I cross the double-yellow line, am I now in trouble? And I'm trying to comply with one law, does that put me in trouble with the other? If you could clarify that for our listening present audience.
So, just as in any time you're passing a slower-moving vehicle, it is very important that you slow down, pause, and make sure that you're not going to cause an oncoming accident by crossing that yellow line, which is allowable in the case of passing, to get around this slower vehicle.
Thank you. I want to highlight one of the features, important elements of tonight's ordinance that we're presenting, the Safe Streets, and that is those who are allowed to be on sidewalks. This is not an exception for no reason. The exception is, again, to protecting of our safety, for those who protect our safety, and also the ambassadors and the special improvement districts who are allowed on the sidewalks. This is not for anybody and everybody and all of that. I think that the firefighters who are new on bikes have had training from the police department who ride bikes, so they're well-trained in navigating traffic, but this also allows them during our large events to get cardiac arrest equipment to those who are in need in a much faster way. In the past, just as an education note to the audience and the public, larger medic vehicles would need to park large crowds, and that it takes time to get to someone, and we are trying to increase our cardiac arrest survival rates, and the bicycle firefighters will help improve that, and I think it's a step in the right direction for our Division of Fire to take a very innovative approach to saving lives, and this ordinance will further support their work. In addition to that, our police officers who are trying to prevent other incidents in going forward, the sidewalk opportunity is also important for them, but I still encourage folks, whether they're on the sidewalk or not, to move out of the ways if they were in the street so that they can get to those who are in need. If you could share a little bit with me, Director Bowman, as it relates to other things that we're doing to promote safety from the bicyclist side of the world, ensuring that the bicyclists are abiding by rules as well as the vehicles. It is about protecting bicyclists, but I think the laws that bicyclists have to abide by will also keep them safe as well. So, if you could touch a little bit about outreach as it relates to their safety.
Sure thing. Thank you, Councilmember. The city has engaged over the years in a Share the Road campaign that features not only education about the types of bicycle facilities that are becoming visible in the city of Columbus, but also about safety. And last year, the city rolled out its most intensive Share the Road campaign yet that featured billboards and banners, some of the banners may still be up, and as well as public service announcements that are still available on the city's website, and we encourage our listeners to visit the city's website to look at the public service announcements about biking safety. We've been partnering with ODOT over these years, actually since 2008, on improving bicycle safety, getting the message out through these various forms of media, through events. The city has received grant funding from ODOT from its Highway Safety Program to further the messaging on safety and safe operations, and we partner quite strongly with the Ohio Department of Transportation on that.
Thank you. I think it's important, and I'm going to raise the, and if you could help me elaborate that some of the changes in the code are a result of state law changes, particularly as it relates to motor-scooter parking and motor-driven cycles being able to park on sidewalks. These changes, again, are part of state law changes that we must clean up our own code, and I want to highlight again, parking must, must be ADA compliant. That's extremely important, and Director Bowman, would you elaborate on that for me just a touch?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Mills. As you said, there are elements in this legislation that we must do, we're compelled to do, state law, state traffic law changes, and we have to roll those changes into Columbus City Code. The same thing was done back in 2008. To your point that parking on sidewalks, while it is now allowed by state law, it is proposed to be incorporated into city code, excuse me, that does not alleviate the operator of that motor scooter, of that motorcycle, their responsibility to ensure safe passage of pedestrians and, quite frankly, our uniformed officers that may be riding their bicycles on sidewalks in conduct of their duties, that they have a responsibility. And the city, as well as the state, is required to comply with Americans with Disabilities Act, which gives very specific guidance as to what is a passable distance, a safe width on sidewalks, and that has to be followed.
Thank you very much. Randy and Leslie, Leslie, you have any closing comments before I move on to Scott? I'd like to ask Scott Ulrich, I'm going to get that right, Healthy Places Program Coordinator for the Department of Health, to share some information with us. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills, for hosting this public hearing on this important piece of legislation. I also want to thank the mayor's office, the Department of Public Service, all of our bicycle advocates, and everyone who came out tonight for all their hard work to create this ordinance. Again, my name is Scott Ulrich, and I'm the Healthy Places Program Coordinator at Columbus Public Health. Our mission at Columbus Public Health is to protect health and improve lives, and I'm here this evening to tell you why Columbus Public Health supports the Safe Streets ordinance. In Franklin County, two-thirds of adults are overweight or obese, and only one-third get the recommended amount of physical activity. But bicycling is healthy. It increases physical activity, improves both physical and mental health, and it reduces obesity. And because transportation is a routine in which we all engage, bicycling has great potential to increase our levels of physical activity and help reverse current obesity rates. So, one of our goals is to get more people biking in Columbus, but time and again, we hear that safety is a major barrier to people making this healthy choice. People are interested in biking, but they're concerned about their safety. This Safe Streets ordinance fits a crucial role in an integrated package of infrastructure programs and policies to make cycling safer and increase ridership. Infrastructure goes a long way to protect cycling safety, but alone it's not enough. Programs like Bike to Work Day, the Share the Road campaign, and the COGO Bike Share system raise awareness of bicycling and also increase the effectiveness of these investments in bicycle facilities. And this ordinance creates a legal framework to protect bicyclists and establishes a less arbitrary passing standard, all of which will go a long way in addressing these concerns of prospective cyclists and getting them riding, which is important because we know that just getting more bikes on the road can create a positive cycle of safety for everyone because higher rates of bicycling actually results in lower overall crash rates for all road users. And so, I urge city council to adopt the Safe Streets ordinance because safer streets create healthier communities, and healthier communities lead to better lives. So, thank you for your time and your consideration in this matter.
Thank you very much. You brought up two very important points, personal points, you're fine, and personal points that we, as this Columbus City Council, have made several million-dollar investments in sidewalks, not necessarily for bike riding, but to provide, for opportunities for pedestrians to walk more and put our bicyclists in safe roadways. I know that in some neighborhoods, it's more of a challenge, but as you mentioned, Scott, the safer we provide the streets, the more activity we'll have, and we will improve the health of our citizens. I know for I know for a fact it has certainly improved my health, the more I ride, the better I feel. And so I'm hoping to create safe opportunity, which, again, will increase in ridership and use of bikes, whether it's to go to work, or school, or to play. I think we are now at the point of my favorite part of a hearing, and that is the public testimony, gives me another opportunity to hear from stakeholders and citizens alike in regards to the issue of tonight's hearing, safer streets. And so with that, I will begin with our first speaker. I will call two names at a time to ask that the second name that I call is prepared to speak immediately following the closing of the speaker before he or she approaches the podium. Our first speaker is Catherine Gervis. Please state your first name and last name as you approach the podium. And after Catherine, I have Heather Bowden, if I am reading correctly. And I always give my disclaimer at my hearings to charge it to my head and not my heart. If I mispronounce your name, please forgive me and pronounce it correctly, if you will, and I will try to do better the next time. Heather, if you will begin, prepare to speak after Ms. Gervis shares her comments for three minutes related to the tonight's hearing, subject of safer streets. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Councilmember Mills. It is always a pleasure to be in your presence. Thank you for chairing this committee and for giving us an opportunity to speak on this topic tonight. My name is Catherine Gervis. I live at 258 North 21st Street, and I am honored to be representing the 512 members of Yay Bikes, approximately two dozen of which are here with us this evening. Yay Bikes is thankful to you and to the other members of Columbus City Council for consideration of 1182, 2014, the proposed Safe Streets ordinance. If adopted, this ordinance helps to clarify appropriate interactions between motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians, creating an even clearer commitment for safety and peaceful streets for all users in Columbus. The Yay Bikes Board of Directors is particularly pleased with the following components of this legislation. One, clarifying that a bicycle is a vehicle in the definition of vehicles and throughout the legislation. Two, clarifying that the law explicitly prohibits motorists from left- or right-hooking bicyclists. Three, clarifying that bicyclists are protected under the law from being doored by motorists. And four, affirming that motorists must pass cyclists at a safe distance and defining a safe distance as at least three feet for automobiles and six feet for most larger vehicles. We are particularly appreciative of the many opportunities provided to Yay Bikes and other advocates in the community of bicyclists to respond to earlier drafts of this legislation and for the thoughtful responses given to all comments. This legislation has clearly been influenced by those of us who ride the street on a daily basis. Thank you. We are here tonight to support this legislation and are excited about coming back to chambers next week, when council is scheduled to take action on the proposed legislation. This ordinance is a wonderful step in the direction of creating peaceful streets for motorists, bicyclists, transit users, and pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate all of your attention, input, and the gathering of all Yay Bikes. And every time I hear Yay Bikes, I just want to do that, I don't know why. It's like a reflex. Yay Bikes! Probably something from my childhood, when I was, yay, I'm riding my bike, I don't know. But thank you again for your input and your time and your advocacy on behalf of bicyclists, and I hope that you join me in saying to our citizens that we want safer streets for bicyclists, we want more bicycle riders, and I know that you share that thought. And also, I know that your membership cares about those who have unfortunately suffered fatalities as a result of unsafe vehicle operation around bicyclists. So thank you for your work, and please thank your membership, who I know some are present. Am I raising your hand, Yay Bikes? Yay, Yay Bikes! It's a reflex, I can't explain it. Okay, thank you very much. Heather Bowden, please. Ms. Bowden, will you please state your first and last name and any organization that you may represent, and you have three minutes to share your comments and concerns related to tonight's hearing, related to Safe Streets ordinance.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Mills. I appreciate you taking the time to let me show my support for this ordinance. My name is Heather Bowden. I am the general manager for COGO Bike Share. We launched at the end of July last year, and we are seeing wonderful success with our program. The city has been so supportive of our program. They actually are stakeholders, they are owners in this, and we work very closely with everybody in this room to make sure that all of our new members, all of our casual day-pass members, are educated and do understand the rules of the road. And this ordinance is a great step forward for the city of Columbus. I personally have lived here for 10 years, and to see the change that is occurring within the city, providing these new transportation alternatives, providing the new infrastructure, this ordinance just helps bring us even further than we were before, 10 years ago. And there's several components to the ordinance that I am very supportive of. The three-foot passing law is something that I'm so grateful that we are moving forward. As you stated earlier, we have seen it in other cities in Ohio. It is actually gaining momentum from a statewide level and a statewide legislative action, so we're very excited about that as well. And it's great to see Columbus jumping on board to further that as well. The other wonderful component to this ordinance is just the ability to have more infrastructure options, bicycle infrastructure options. It allows the Department of Public Service more tools to add to their toolbox, and we at COGO Bike Share are very supportive of that, because as we're seeing our new members, some who haven't ridden a bike in a very long time and are just now getting back into it, to be able to have that infrastructure that creates a safe place for them to ride is critical. So thank you for letting me share my support, and yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. You wouldn't happen to have membership numbers with you this evening? It's okay if you don't.
983 annual members.
Oh, you do? Thank you. Silly me.
Yes. We've actually seen over 200,000 miles ridden, over five times around the earth, 4 million calories burned thus far from our users, and 72,000 pounds of carbon emissions reduced.
Well, that's prepared, aren't you? But thank you. As the Chair of the Environment Committee, all of those things are important, right, Leslie? So it's good to hear those numbers, and thank you again for coming to tonight's hearing.
Thank you.
Next, I have the next two speakers. I have Nathaniel Wilkins. If you will please approach the podium, share your first and last name and any organization that you represent. And just after Mr. Wilkins, I have Jess Matthews. If you will begin preparing to approach the podium, I would greatly appreciate it. Mr. Wilkins, you have three minutes.
Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, 1612 Arlington Avenue, also the chairman solely for Vakon Amendment Prop. My main concern is the safety for the bicyclists at night. I know we have some fatal accidents for the last couple of weeks, and, you know, I just want to, just to say thank you. But there ought to be more done with vehicles, bikes on the road late at night, just coming from hustling and busting from work. Again, they just need to be more done with special decals on bikes, on clothes, and things to let people know that these bicyclists are out here that's traveling through morning hours and rush hour of time in the evening. So again, I just want to say thank you, and I'm strongly do and support this.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, and as always, I can count on you to bring up another important topic that we need to highlight. We talk about the safety of the vehicles in regards to bicyclists, but it is a very important note to talk about being visible at night for our cyclists. So thank you very much, Mr. Wilkins, for your comments. Again, Jess Matthews, please approach the podium. Please share first, last name, any organizations that you may represent, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Mills, for bringing us to this point and for your continued leadership. My name is Jessica Matthews, and I'm on staff with Consider Biking and helped establish the Safe Streets ordinance with assistance from Greg Listini of Bricker &amp; Eckler and the support from Leslie Strater of the mayor's office. So I thank you both for your continued support. Our organization is in full support of the passing of the Safe Streets ordinance. Cincinnati, Cleveland, Toledo, and Bay Village have passed similar Safe Streets ordinances. In 2012, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration reported over 49,000 people riding bikes in the U.S. have been injured and close to 730 killed. Seventy percent of those injured and fatally hit occur in urban areas. Every one of us counts. The way that mothers, fathers, students, young professionals, and others are choosing to move around is changing every day. We are no longer living in a society where one mode is the only preferred mode. People want choice. As people continue to embrace wanting and seeking multiple ways to move around, not only should the infrastructure of our roads change to accommodate, so should our laws, as our laws are put in place so that society remains safe and civil. One of the many positives of passing the Safe Streets ordinance is that it seeks to ensure, when passing a person on a bike, drivers allow adequate, common-sense space to safely pass the more vulnerable people using the roads. Will this be difficult to enforce? At times. However, by joining the four other Ohio cities, people who ride in Columbus can at least have the legal framework to protect themselves in the incidence of being buzzed or hit from behind. In a report just published last month from the League of American Bicyclists, the highest collision types between motorists and people on bikes was hit-from-behind collisions at 40 percent. With having Ohio's capital city pass the Safe Streets ordinance, we join the four other cities with a stronger unified voice in saying, we hear you, we see you, and we want everyone to reach their destination safely. The Safe Streets ordinance is about safety. Safety is not exclusive, but inclusive. Should Safe Streets pass, I would also strongly encourage an aggressive education and enforcement campaign. As our cities continue to improve and promote bicycling, the passing of Safe Streets will be another step in the direction of changing behavior on our roads and encouraging and promoting safe and equitable streets. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jess Matthews, for sharing your comments, and I appreciate your input and the early development of the legislation. I think we met about a year or better ago. So thank you again for hanging in there with us. Again, I know oftentimes it doesn't move at the speed that we all wish it would, but that we get there, and that's the important part, and hopefully we get there in time to continue to make our streets safe. The next two speakers, I have Ruth Mulligan. Mulligan, maybe, that's a U. It's an I, Mulligan, I had it right. Okay, Ms. Mulligan, if you would please approach the podium, share your first and last name and any organization that you represent, and you have three minutes to share your comments on this legislation. After Ms. Mulligan has finished her testimony, Mr. William Kohler, if you will please prepare to approach the podium. Ms. Mulligan, you have three minutes to share your concerns or comments related to the Safe Streets ordinance.
Great, thank you very much, Congress, excuse me, Councilwoman Mills, Congress. My name is Ruth Mulligan. I live at 265 Oakland Park Avenue, and unlike the GM executives that flew into Congress, I did ride my bike here tonight as opposed to driving. I'm speaking tonight in favor of the proposed amendment to require the three-foot clearance and six-foot clearance when passing bicycles. So I'm here as a mom tonight, and a bicyclist, and a wife of someone who commutes. My husband has been commuting from Clintonville downtown for 20 years. For many years, we only had one car, and that's his primary form of transportation. I sent him with the kids tonight and decided to be here myself, because the story I wanted to share was about what happened on Mother's Day this year, which was the only thing I wanted to do was to bring my eight-year-old and 10-year-old on their bikes downtown to do some exploring between the Audubon and some favorite spots in the short north, and to see their grandmother, who lives at Neal and Goodeale. But for several days before, we had this big tension between us about where it would be appropriate for our children to actually ride when they came downtown. And we came up with the solution that my husband woke up on Mother's Day morning at 6:00 a.m., drove his car to the corner of Goodeale and Neal, rode his bike home, back to Clintonville, collected all of us, we all rode downtown on the trail, parked our bikes at Goodeale and Neal, where my mother lives, got in the car and drove around downtown to avoid my children having to ride on the busy streets. It is our desire to be able to ride both from our house to Whetstone Park, from our house to Olympic Pool on High Street and in Anola as a family. And right now, we don't feel safe doing that. We will take trails, we will stay on back roads. It is my desire that if this ordinance is passed, that maybe when Mother's Day rolls around next year, we'll be able to take that trip downtown and around all on our bikes. Thank you very much for your time tonight and your support of this legislation.
Thank you very much. The story brings it all home for many of us, I think, that that's what we all desire, that access to anywhere in our city can be safely accessed by bike riding, and it also helps us from a variety of ways, environment being the first one. Mr. Kohler, you have three minutes. Please share your first and last name and any organization that you represent. You have three minutes to share your comments or concerns related to tonight's ordinance regarding safe streets.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. My name is Will Kaler. I live in Clintonville on Weisheimer Road, and like the previous speaker, my family has one car, and I ride everywhere I go. In fact, I go weeks without even getting in a car. I have a four-year-old daughter and a wife, and I want to go around with them, and right now, we don't feel it's safe to ride on High Street and some of the other roads with her, so we stick to the trails and neighborhoods, and we pretty much go to businesses that we can get to on the trails and neighborhoods. So it's limiting what businesses we can go to, because we want to ride our bikes. So that's one point I'd like to make in favor of this ordinance. It's one step to make our streets safer for my family. The other point is that as an independent developer, I can live anywhere in the country I want to, and I've looked at San Francisco, Portland, Seattle, Chicago, New York, and I keep coming back to Columbus. I'm really happy here, and I'm excited to see the improvements in biking, and that's one of the reasons that I'm staying in Columbus. It's important for business that's trying to attract talent to Columbus, and people like me, that we have things like Safe Streets for biking. I have another friend that just moved to Brooklyn because they have better biking, so it cuts both ways. I think that we have room for improvement, but we're making the right strides, and I think this ordinance is a good step, and I'm in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You raised another point that I was going to highlight in my closing comments. I have had the opportunity to travel, and everywhere I travel, I try to ride a bike, do a bike tour, ride around the city, because I think it's one of the best ways to discover a city. I think you can see so much, and so from economic development side of this ordinance, safe streets means people are out and about, and they probably discover things on a bike that they would not in a car. It's just a different way of seeing the city, and I hope that residents will discover some of our local businesses while on bike, because I think there's a different opportunity to see things that you may not otherwise notice and decide to patronize. And that includes whether you go by pedicab, or COGO, or your own bicycle. I think there's plenty of opportunity to discover Columbus by bike, and I think, as you all know, this is a tremendously wonderful city, and I think discovering it by bike, we want to continue to encourage. Our next two speakers, David Hoffman, I want to say, I'm struggling on two letters in the middle, so please forgive me. If you will please approach the podium and please share and correct your last name for me, and any organization you represent, you have three minutes. And after Mr. Hoffman, I have Kirsten Carr. If you will please prepare to approach the podium and share your comments immediately following Mr. Hoffman. Mr. Hoffman, you have three minutes to share comments and concerns related to tonight's Safe Streets ordinance.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. My name is David Homan, and I reside at 931 Montrose. I commute from Bexley to downtown each day by bicycle year-round. I started that in 2007, and I've logged over 1,000 round trips now commuting, and I calculate my avoided carbon footprint, as well as time savings, money savings. Bikes have a lot of advantages health-wise in my life now. I'm really appreciative of the ability to ride. I do believe that having a three-foot mandatory I do believe that having a three-foot mandatory passing space will increase my safety on the road, and bikes are vulnerable road users. We're just people getting around like other people in cars who are protected by their padded cells of the car. We're not as protected, and so I wear a helmet, it has lights, it has a mirror on it, it has a taillight. These are all good things for visibility. It even has reflective stickers I put on there to be seen at night, and I put stickers like that on my bike, too. So, I take safety very seriously, my safety as well as that of other road users. Six feet is definitely better for the commercial vehicles, too. I think one of the most scary ones to be passed by is a landscaper trailer. These guys come in with narrower trucks, pickup trucks hauling a really wide trailer, and then the fenders are hanging off the side of that, and they don't really know how wide they are. And having a lot of space to be passed by something like that is especially useful, and that's why I'm glad to have my mirror, so I know who's coming up. But I can only do so much to protect myself, and then I'm depending on the other road users to see me. The left hook is very scary, too. That's when someone doesn't see me, they're coming at me, and they turn left right in front of me. I've had people, I hit a car that pulled in front of me on a street, and they said they didn't see me. I was riding, riding the other direction, and this is in broad daylight. And I don't ride, ride in the curb, I ride out a little bit so I can be seen. It's called taking the lane, but it's necessary for safety to be passed, people can go across the yellow. But we do need to be able to be protected and seen, and if there's another way for the law enforcement to say there's an ordinance requiring this, then I'm all in favor of that for the extra safety it gives us. Finally, I'd like to make one suggestion, which is to adopt a more proactive safety culture about our bikes on the streets. I'd like to see a way to track some of the near misses that happen, rather than just reacting to the very bad accidents where someone loses their life or is sent to the hospital for months. If we can track these other things where maybe the police are called, maybe they're not, we could definitely have more data to analyze and increase the safety of all these road users, like the bikes. And I will say also, there are 55 people who rode their bikes to work at my office today, and I'm just one of them, so I worked.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Ms. Carr, you have three minutes. Please share your first and last name and any organization you represent. You have three minutes to share your comments or questions related to tonight's ordinance.
Good evening, Councilwoman Mills, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today about the importance of bicycle safety and to express the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission's support of the Safe Streets Ordinance. My name is Kirsten Carr, and I'm the Director of Planning and Environment here at MORPC. And transportation planning, funding, and safety are key functions at our agency. When we conduct transportation planning, we look at our transportation system holistically so we can ensure that all users are safe. Every year, we analyze crash data around the region. We review and report on many safety statistics, including those that relate to bicyclists. Bike safety is very important to MORPC, and I would like to highlight just a few statistics with you this evening. A five-year average of bicycle crashes found that 10% result in fatality or serious injury compared to 2.3% of all crashes, showing the greater vulnerability of bicyclists in a crash. Young people are at the highest risk of being involved in a crash. Bicyclists 10 to 15 years old comprise the most common age range, accounting for close to 17% of all bicyclists involved in a crash. And this ordinance, as mentioned earlier, is critical because it highlights the need of motorists to be aware of other users of the road. Nighttime is an especially dangerous time as a cyclist because of less visibility. Bicycle crashes that occur between 9:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. account for only 16% of all crashes, but nearly 30% of all fatal and serious injury crashes. We are very happy to see that this ordinance will create best practices bicycling law, increase bike parking, and especially affirm that motorists must pass cyclists at a safe distance, and that it codifies that at three feet for automobiles and six feet for most commercial vehicles. This will keep cyclists safer, as failure to yield is the leading cause of injuries resulting from bicycle crashes. Drivers failing to yield account for 24% of serious injuries and 33% of minor injuries. It's significant that the city of Columbus demonstrates to the state legislator how vital these safety measures are, especially the three-foot passing rule. As Randy Bowman and others have mentioned, the cities of Cleveland, Cincinnati, and Toledo already have similar laws on the books. If the city of Columbus passes this law and joins its fellow cities, this will send a strong message to our legislature that we need to address this at a statewide level. 23 states and the District of Columbia already have three-foot passing laws. Councilwoman Mills, thank you again for your time, and I urge you to pass this important legislation.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming down. I appreciate MORPC's attention to this important ordinance. I believe that concludes all of our speaker slips for this evening. I want to thank Leslie and Randy again for their hard work and all of the stakeholders who've been a part of getting us here today, and send a message to encourage my fellow councilmembers for their support on next Monday. I want to take time also to share with many of you a couple important pieces. I want to strongly encourage those, regardless of laws or city codes, on helmets. Everyone should wear a bicycle helmet. I would be remiss if I let this opportunity pass by without stressing that. I also want to ask our bicyclists, those who make use of our trails, that they're multi-use trails, to be careful and thoughtful and considerate of the walkers and the runners on our trails as well, as we all try to enjoy the investments that we've made to continue to increase access and safe options and different transportation alternatives for our citizens. I also want to, again, encourage folks to discover Columbus by bike. I think it is the best mode to see the city, and to always wave if you see me out on my bike. I'd appreciate a hello. And I want to make sure our bicyclists do not antagonize our vehicles, as again, we are sharing the road, and if we want vehicles to be more open and receptive of bicyclists on the road, to make sure that we don't antagonize or provoke. Road rage happens on two wheels or four wheels, so let's all try to share the road so that we all can be safe, we all can reach our destination safely, and certainly whether it's Mother's Day or Father's Day or any day, I want to make sure our families are safe and can access our entire city by bike, car, or by feet. Thank you for those who continue to ride, who help our environment by riding. Please ride as much as you can, it truly helps all of us. And again, this ordinance is another example of our city departments working together. I cannot say enough about that. It is a great day when we can get a variety of departments together and talk about what the impact is for our safety department, the impact for service, impact when we talk about our investments in sidewalks, to talk about our environment, and this is just yet another example of how we can make our city even better when we all work together, whether we're in City Hall or not. But I think our stakeholders had a good look at how we can work together when we all get together around something very important, that's the safety of our citizens. So, thank you all again for coming out this evening and participating in the hearing or viewing from your home. We're looking forward to passing legislation next Monday, would certainly appreciate the support. As I know, my other councilmembers would like to hear from many of the stakeholders related to this legislation, but I am sure that they share my thoughts about whatever we can do to increase the safety of our city. Thank you again, and Yay Bikes. Have a good evening.